Stand for our invitation. Good Lord, we ask you to lead and guide us as we go throughout this day. And especially today, we ask that you guide us in our decisions that we make the best ones for the citizens of Maesville. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Row call please.
Commissioner Brammer.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Kurtwell.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner McKay.
Here.
Mayor Cottrell.
Yes ma'am.
City Manager Wallingford.
Here.
Controller Stanfield.
Here.
H R Director Rose. Project Coordinator Hord.
Here.
Public Works Director Truesdale.
Here.
Police Chief Palmer.
He'll be here.
Fire Chief Doyle.
Here.
Utility Manager Julian.
Here.
Zoning Administrator Larger. Building Inspector Fawcett. Codes Officer Brooks. Tourism Director Bailey. Maintenance Director Reese.
Thank you. Discussion. FYI 2024 budget.
Mayor Commissioners, we'd like to just give you an overview of what the major departments here are, the big departments are going to be asking for. I'm going to start down at the end of the table with you.
I get to start?
Yeah, you get to start. I'm going to start with you and then I'm going to roll. Probably into that guy there. Go ahead Chief.
So I'll just go through, I've got four items and when we look at the monetary value of these, probably more than I've ever asked for with its time for most of these. So first one I have is a new fire engine. It costs $680,000. A new engine will take probably two years to build unless we can find a demo model that works for us, which is not as easy as it is maybe with like an ambulance. So even if we approve this, we'll have to work out how that, you know, to carry those funds over if we pay it over before we get it. We're looking at two years to receive this thing. I've mentioned a new engine to Matt for probably four or five years and keep saying, well, we'll wait till next year, we'll wait till next year. If you remember a couple of years ago, we fortunate enough to buy a 20-year-old engine for $29,000, something like that to give us by and it's done what it needs to do and it's still doing so. We need to take it ahead and probably move forward. I can elaborate on options and details, but I would assume today since we're just doing an overview that that's good enough. But that's the first item. Second one is another frontline ambulance. Penny likes to give me a hard time about always asking for an ambulance, but if we're going to run an ambulance service, we need ambulance. So again, as we talked about a few months back when we did the bid opening and acceptance on the previous or the current year's ambulance, looking at a two-year build on them, we would hope that if we were approved for one for the 2024 budget, that we could possibly find a demo like we did last time or even explore the options, the option of a remount so that we don't have to wait two years on it. But again, if we have to order a new one, we're looking at two years and I put in $240,000 request for that.
And we don't even really know if we're going to get the one that you have ordered. Right now, it might already go over to the next year.
I have hearing aids ordered, but if you're not looking at me, I can't hear you.
Okay, okay. Are you good on everything so far?
Did your whole.
I'd like to know too what the second one was you were asking for. First was the fire engine.
Yeah, second one is an ambulance. Similar to what we, what we did the bid openings for a month or so ago. And just an update for the ambulance we approved, we were excited because it was coming off the assembly line, I don't know, two days after we approved it, we were going to get it fast. Dodge has since then had a recall and they will not release it from the factory along with, I guess thousands of other ones. So we are waiting at the mercy of Dodge to fix the recall on those units to get them out. We hope to have it in the next few weeks.
And are they gassers?
Back to diesel. We've gone back for, so for years we did diesel. We had luck with the gas units for a while, we're back to diesel. The third odd item is a cot loading system for each of our frontline or 911 ambulances. This is something that we've kind of had our eye on for several years. We're kind of behind the times when it comes to these as far as the way we operate in comparison to a lot of other EMS agencies across the state. Basically, they are a system that allows patients to be loaded without killing our backs and creating workers comp claims, which we've had our fair share of over the last several years. When we look at doing four ambulances, we have one system now and we look at doing four others, we're looking at a cost of about $234,000. This came up, the mayor met with each of the departments, it's probably been pushing a year ago now. And I know this was a huge concern by our guys and one of the things they really hoped to see added to our fleet. So that has been included for this year. And then the last one is approval for a portion of funds on a boat for the river with the improvements we hope to make to the riverfront. We are, we are not prepared to make emergency calls on the river, even the way it stands. And I think if we are going to continue to build on that, there's going to be the potential for more need. We're going out right now on the river in a inflatable boat the size of this table that probably doesn't need to be on the river at all. And that's how we are responding to emergencies. Fortunately, they're not every day, but when they do happen, we need to be safe. So with that said, we've applied for a FEMA grant through the Coast Guard and I'm going to let my sister chief Carpenter tell you more about that, but it sounds very hopeful that we can receive that grant. However, they do, they want us to have a boat. And when I say boat, it is a boat that does it all. So it is expensive and even our portion is a decent amount of money. So I'll let Kyle explain a little bit more.
Well, credit to Tony Lees. He's been our E M Director now for a year and he went to a couple of meetings in Northern Kentucky with the Cincinnati Port and their whole emergency response team with that port. And down in this area between the two dams, they have this many boats that are really capable to do emergency responses. So they were looking to have an asset in this area. So they entered, kind of said, hey, you need to put in for this FEMA port security grant for a boat. And we know there's nothing in this area. And this was the National Guard telling us, oh no, the Coast Guard, sorry, the Coast Guard telling us this. The guy who's over the, basically all of the Ohio River saying, we know there's no assets and we need a boat in this area. And so we met with him, we talked about it, we, me, Chief Palmer, Chris Conley and Tony, we've met with him and he discussed kind of what kind of, what kind of boat or kind of what we may need for this boat asset. We, Cincinnati got a boat a few years ago and they, they got a million dollar boat. Anderson Township just got approved last year for this boat and it was just right under what we've asked for. So the way the conversation went in this meeting, it acted like there's a really, really, really good possibility of us getting this grant with the bridges we've got for the security of them, the power plants and also the riverfront project that we're doing and the boats ported in here. So I think this is, like Chief said, with all the traffic we're getting for tourism and everything and for security with Palmer and for rescue with us, this boat's going to be able to do, it's got a fire pump, we're going to be able to fight fires out on the river, rescue, it's got sonar, for any kind of security thing that we may need, the watchies bridges, the watchie stations for any of this boat traffic, this boat can do. And it's going to be something that's going to last years, you know, 20 years, it's built to last. So we kind of get, go ahead.
So if here's the only boat between the dams, would we be expected to help like neighboring counties if that was a disaster?
We just talked about that when we walked in. We would not have any requirement to do so. If it was reasonable to respond, we would do that as a mutual aid. We wouldn't go to Greena to put out a boat fire, we couldn't do that. But you know, if there was an emergency at the Manchester Islands and we had the staff available, we would probably lease it.
What's the match amount on the, if you get the grant?
It is $75.25. $75.25.
Do you know what that 25 might be? Penny's got it?
140.
140, okay.
It's on the second page.
Oh, okay, sorry.
What about the boats that Alex Versus group had out there?
Those are about the same quality as our boat now. They're small little boats, probably don't need to be on the river, to be completely honest, they're made for swift water. They're made for when the water and the creeps get up.
Oh yeah, they were nice boats when they got them.
Yeah, yeah, so it's just something in this area, it's needed. So when we, I guess when I've talked in meetings before, we're going to remember Maesville is not just Maesville, we're the main hub for this area and we're the leaders in that area. So working with Palmer and Conley and it's something emergency management will be able to utilize also. So between the traffic we have on the river and you'd be surprised what's in these barges. You go and read what's being hauled down the river, what kind of materials are being hauled and something as simple as the riverboat that's coming in, what, once, twice a month in the summer, you would get halfway up the river and it starts sinking or something. That's a lot of people we're going to have to transport to the bank. And so I think it's an asset we may need, so.
I think it's a good asset.
Is the boat just the beginning of a whole navigation program or is it just a boat or is everybody going to have to go to training after that to be certified to run a boat? Does everybody have to be certified to swim? I mean, we bought police dogs at one time and you think, okay, we're going to buy a police dog, but then, you know, then you might have to buy a kennel with it and you might have to buy training for so many officers. And I just want to know if this is just a boat or if it's the beginning of more?
The answer is yes, there's going to be some training. Is it, when I was at specking out the boat, the guy was like, you want the boat that takes a couple of days of training or do you want the boat that takes a month of training? I said, we want the boat that takes a couple of weeks of training because I feel like this is going to be more of a, the Maisel Fire Department, we don't have the staffing to specialize people in just that area. We're, we're, we train in everything. So it's good, it's going to add more training, but it's not going to be something that we're going to specialize in. But with that being said, there's, with this grant, we're putting in for this boat, we can put in every year for this grant. And anything under $25,000 is 100% match. So in the future, equipment for this boat, training for this boat, we're putting in for this grant, it kind of opens up that grant for all the other stuff. And if we're under $25,000, that, that's 100%. So that's like a win-win kind of thing after getting this boat, we can start putting in for these other grants. So it's one of this upfront cost it's going to get us, but in the future it can lead to more free money.
So is this something you have to profit this grant now?
Yes.
Yeah.
We actually, I will, and I was kind of waiting to see how this discussion went, but we're going to have it on the agenda for Thursday to be approved to move forward with that grant.
Don't let me forget to add that. I haven't got a chance to talk, get with me later.
And we've, we've met with Jameson and Christie at Buffalo Trace are helping us with this grant.
Mayor, that's part of the correspondence we've gotten about getting on the site and I think you would have to go and approve it after it, but I did some initial work with it last week to get the project set up and them to have access at Buffalo Trace. So it is been in some of that correspondence that we've been getting about that, but we have started some initial processes with it.
And this is fire department only right there, wouldn't it? It's not a shared, or is it police and fire?
It's, we're going to ride it for the fire department, but it's a joint venture. We're working with the police department with Chris Conley, he's been with me and Palmer been with me with these meetings, it's going to be utilized by both. Because to get this grant, what they want it roped for is for more security than rescue because it's the port security grant. So we're working with the police, we're getting the stuff they want, we're getting, we're also utilizing for rescue. So it's going to, it's not just the Maisel Fire Boat, it's going to be used by both the police and us.
So do you need a consensus today or you wait till Thursday?
No, and honestly, even if we, even if come Thursday you approve for us to move forward with this grant and even if we get approved and we decide that something major happened financially and we can't do it then, it's.
We don't have to accept.
I just need everyone to move forward with the grant.
Yeah.
Not, not today, but on Thursday.
Is it possible later down the road, since he said we are the hub, that we could enter agreements with neighboring counties and like Bracken, Lewis, Robberston would be excluded of course, but, and then maybe Southern Brown and Addings to some sort of contribution that they could use, that we're going to be using?
I think some of them would probably be open to that. Of course, once you do that, then you do have that obligation to send it, but yeah, I think that's a possibility.
Would Pendleton be out of there, Buffalo County?
Well, we have to get through the dam.
From Dame to Dam is where they're really hurt for access. On the other side of the dam, they've got Anderson Township, they've got Cincinnati and they also got, what's the casino town in Indiana?
Lawrenceburg.
Lawrenceburg just got one this past year too, they got to approve also. So there's 100 million in this FEMA security grant. Cincinnati Port gets 1% of it almost every year religiously. So they get a million dollars. And so the people that are over that 1% in the Cincinnati Port, that's from us all the way past Indiana and those areas already got their boats. So like the guy said, there's a very good possibility we get approved for this grant as long as we fill this grant out right and have all our ducks in a row.
Great, okay.
I think it should be named the Kevin Doyle.
I have one question as far as the timing, I mean, is this boat something that will be able to hit our next fiscal year? I'm just thinking about where it needs to hit our budget. You know, you all need to know as far as, is it going to be two years or is this next year?
It's going to be two years.
So it's really not going to hit our next year's fiscal year budget?
That makes it really hard to come to you with these requests, not knowing when we're really, that's just the way everything is now.
The boat manufacturer that I talked, that I had contact with or filled the other three boats off the river, Cincinnati, Anderson Township and the one in Indiana. And he said, the Anderson Township just put in their order and it's going to be exactly almost two years.
Okay.
So.
So it won't really hit fiscal year 25, but we still need to know that we've obligated ourselves to that for 24.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
Good job, Phil.
Chief Palmer.
Good afternoon. Let me get squatted around in this seat here.
We didn't have anything in the packet to give.
Yeah, no, I have not put anything on letterhead yet because I'm still just trying to. So go ahead, I'm still trying to firm up on sir. And I'll start with, we have put in and requested a grant for update on the CAD system, which is now almost seven years old. It's about a $25,000 grant and if we get, will be great, but if not, that would be a capital item that we have to budget for.
What did you say that again?
We have put in a grant with CMRS 911 Services for an update on our CAD system. It's about seven years old, so it's due an update. If we get the grant, we'll be in good shape as far as, it's about a $29,000 update to the CAD system. The, the other entities that involve with the CAD system are itemized items for the budget that we've always incorporated service agreements and stuff like that, so we're good. But that, that's a big hit ticket item that if we don't get, we'll have to budget for somehow. With that being said, also, I spoke with Kelly, we will have a resolution for Friday. We, we had a committee meeting for the upgrade on the radio system. Radio system again is almost seven years old. The CMRS money will pay for $124,000 with this upgrade. That leaves another six.
It was about 650 altogether, I think.
About $650,000 as far as upgrade that we are putting in for this CMRS, or excuse me, Homeland Security Grant for update on the radio. We have a meeting with.
Buffalo Trace.
Buffalo Trace on the 20th to discuss this grant proposal, so. As far as dispatch, that's the two big ticket items that we're looking for that are, you know, basically required upgrade on the system that's, it's about seven years old. And it's a, I can't, you know, anytime we've had a problem with, with anything on a radio system, they come spot on and fixed it and stuff like that. But we're operating on software that is seven years old and needs to be replaced and that's just the way of the nature of the beast nowadays is your software is about good five or seven years and you got to upgrade. That's what we're looking at on that. Some, some capital items that I'm looking for, trying to firm up on the police department is, I currently have four vehicles that are seven years old and 12 vehicles, they're six years old. Vehicles are a challenge as of now. We ordered two vehicles last year, we, or excuse me, three vehicles last year that we approved, we have to send. That in mind, and they're not making cars anymore. You can't get a police car, it's all SUVs. We currently have two SUVs, a Ford Explorers, but what I am asking and looking to is to replace two of the older cars with two Dodge Durangos because that is the cheapest SUV that I can allocate. It's about $42,400 a piece. It takes about $9,000 to outfit each of these vehicles. So that is what I'm looking for as far as these equipment and it'd take two older vehicles, higher mileage off the street.
So the ones that you, we approved last year, still?
We're still waiting to get, yes ma'am.
But we still have that money?
Yes ma'am, and, and we check every week. I stay on, my lieutenant is over that, he's a good car guy and I flat wear him out, he wears it up, Dodge and it's just, we're stuck. We're, we, you know, we received a grant earlier, late last year for an upgrade on our 911 system, the phone system. We're still waiting for parts to get that upgraded from AT&T. So it's, we're kind of stuck in the supply chain of where this stuff is coming from. The other, like I said, there's two other items I want to talk to you about that are capital items. And one, Commissioner Wood, is, yes, a canine. I've been without a canine for about four months. So yes, I have been without a dog for about four months and people have been calling, hey, I need a dog, I need a dog. We've been having to go to other agencies, Lewis County and a couple of other agencies. What I am looking for though, and I am pretty stuck on this, is I told both my past canine handlers, I personally do not see the need for a dog that's going to bite somebody anymore. A dual purpose dog, I do not see that need. Society has kind of pushed us away from that. We've been in several lawsuits and it doesn't matter. I just don't see the need for that. Now, if they tell me different and persuade me, then I will, but right now I'm looking at a single purpose trained dog. And what I mean by that is it's going to find dope, then it's going to find somebody missing. You know, it's something that any animal is going to bite you, everybody knows that, but this is not trained to be aggressive animal, it's not trained to protect the handler, it's trained to find dope and it's trained to find people. The cost for a single purpose dog is, I have, is from 12, 12,500 to 14,000. And then my budget that I keep in, the line item for veterinary care equipment and stuff like that is about $5,000 every year, so I'm good with that. We still have a kennel that we can move again, if need be, but that's what I'm looking for as far as a canine. So I am looking for another canine because like I said, I think it is a great asset for the police. And, and they're good to have. The last, I think, at, at this moment, the last capital item I'll talk to you about and everything else I think will fall in, unless I'm told differently, when I meet with Penny, is last year we received a grant from the ASAP Board for $27,000. That grant was for a digital forensic interview system. Basically what that is, is a system that when we're, you know, working cases and nowadays everybody has a cell phone, where's the evidence at? On a cell phone, right? Whether you're dealing with sexual crimes, whether you're dealing with drug crimes, whether you're dealing with domestics or some of these, you know, these young individuals at school, everybody's videotaping everything. We received this grant last year and it has been an asset to this department to where we are able to download our own phones and secure this evidence off these phones instead of having to drive to Frankfurt, drive to Northern Kentucky or drive to Ashland to do this. This, we did not ask for it again this year from ASAP Board, just was the fact that we got it last year. But what they have brought to me is a cell block system similar to what we have now and the total final pricing on that is about $38,000. You know, again, it is a tool that is very useful for us to download these phones, it breaks the phones, it downloads information, saves them for forensic interviewing. Again, you know, I, I can't tell you how many cases we've made and had to get the, you know, information off the phone to secure further evidence in the case back from, you know, several years. But it's, we're going to Frankfurt, you know, again, we're going to the AG's office, we're going to Ashland, we're going to anywhere that will have time to look at it and download the phone for us until we, until we got our system last year. So that's what I'm asking for again this year.
So does this upgrade the system or it's a license for another year?
This is, this is, this is an upgrade into a better system than what we have. And the price is very similar to what we had a total, we had, it's probably about $8,000 more than what we spent last year, but this is a lot better system, a lot easier to provide the evidential information, be it email to a defense attorney or to a prosecuting attorney that way. The system we have right now pretty much restricts us on how we can move that evidentiary information from point A to point B.
Is this just like a one-year thing though?
This will be an annual thing.
So it is annual, right, it's not like mine. It's just an annual subscription to that program, which the other one was.
It'll be, and it might be a little bit different on the, the annual service agreement, but that's something that I still got to get into to get solid on, on that. I can, the, the last thing I talked to is only, it's about a $7,000 investment and we moved into that building across the street in 2007. The door locks on that building across the street are there since 2007. We lost electric two weeks ago, every door in that building was locked and we couldn't get anywhere unless you had a key. The software is Windows 7 over there, if it ain't XP, that's how old the system that is locked and running on. I need an upgrade. I did get a quote from Todd Dill who does business here with the phone system and stuff like that on replacing the system and I'll throw that into the capital. It's 69, yeah, 692790 is what it is. And once I solidify a few more things on this that I spoke about today, I'll definitely put it in a letterhead form and get it to you, present it in a letter.
Thank you.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
David and Craig have got some, a pretty nice out of service police vehicle with 54,000 miles on it for about what, 15 grand was it? Yeah. Would those work as a stopgap measure for you all?
If they work, you'd probably get another year, year and a half out of them that we'd have to replace again, yeah. I mean, if that's something that you want me to look into, I can definitely do that.
Well, just ask them about it, you know, it's, it'd be a great savings and that's a nice vehicle that they have.
Right. Okay, I'll look at both of them.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dennis? Go quick.
All right. Thank you all. What we'd like to go over today is, is, and then we'll leave the first item entirely up to you guys. We're looking at the first item. First item I need is a new flood wall mower. I want to look at a new one, I haven't had one since 2014. It's usually about every five years as far as cut quick. There's two different prices there, there's 70,000 for the one without a cab, which is the same size mower we have, which, you know, Victor, you see them every day. They're, they're good. The other one is a cab mower, which is a little bit bigger horsepower, a little bit bigger mower, a lot more safer as far as, you know, your stability on it, on that flood wall. We do have the flood wall, so we're, we're going to have to get one. We upgraded our lawn mowers last year as far as pumps, but, and had to put pump drives on them. Last year we put three sets of pump drives on our two lawn mowers because they just don't hold together. And then I had to put a new deck on one, Penny helped me with that, but they're, they're at the wore out point. They're, they're beyond, they're, they're beyond fixing and repairing, they're just, they've, they've served their limit. Second item, I lost a plow truck this year as far as rails, one of my salt plow trucks. It was what we call our flower truck two, it was the one Jeff drove for our flower truck, but in the winter time we can't use it for a salt plow truck because the rails are so rotted, so thin, they're rotten and too on it. We would like to get a new plow truck, that's 55,000 per, for the gasoline. That's fifty-five thousand per, for the gasoline engine truck. That is the plane truck, just like two of them we have, but that is a pickup truck. That's what we need for our alleyways and our small streets. We do need to replace that one. Number three is a dump bed. I need a, we're looking for to replace the dump bed on our older dump truck. We, you all did help me with getting a dump truck last year, but that's because we had to pull the other dump truck off. We can't use it as a snowplow truck, but we do use it as a service truck to be able to haul gravel, coal patch, hot mix and stuff like that in. But the bed's deteriorated very bad. You know, the salt has eaten it up. We've patched it twice and can't get it to hold together. So, me and Luke looked at it and we've got some prices on them. It's around twelve thousand dollars for a new bed. Refabbing the Piker. Three-twenty-two is our oldest Piker. I'm optimistic about this. I'll be a little optimistic, and I'll be honest with you. I don't know if it's worth refabbing the bed on the Piker, or if it's to look into getting us another Piker, because in the, we're already looking at three-twenty-two, it's a two thousand and four model. We're going to start running out of being able to get parts for them later on. So, that's something that I'd like to look into before, you know, before I bring that one back to you. As far as what another used Piker would be, I don't feel we need a new one because we're not in the garbage business, but we do have our own trash business that we have to have two garbage Packers. We can't run the city of Maysville with one. We just can't do it. So, eventually, we're going to have to have another Piker. I'm very strongly in looking at a different Piker. I don't know the cost of it, but I will get back with you all on that one right there if that's okay. I talked to Penny about the next one, the playground equipment. I would like to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the next five years to upgrade all of our playground equipment. That is as far as Beechwood, the boat dock, Union Street, the four, the one down here on Wall Street, and that's only ours. That's not considering the rec park area. That is a different entity out there.
One down Fourth Street.
And the one on Fourth Street too. Yes, I want, but I want to try to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars a year for a five-year plan to replace in our playground equipment because we do have some outdated, a lot of outdated playground equipment, and it's going to hit us all at once. It's really-
Did you not say we were applying for a grant for that last year?
We couldn't apply for it because it, we was, we tried to apply for it, but we couldn't apply for it because it wasn't for us. It wasn't a matching grant. We could have applied for it, but we wouldn't have got it. When I talked with Penny, it was a grant that we couldn't get. So, there's nothing out there right now. If there was a grant out there, I would be on David and Penny both to help me try to see what we could get for it, but I'm not running into anything, and I would be hounded mad over it too. But right now, there's nothing that we can get, so I think to upgrade our playground equipment, we're going to have to look at twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the next five years. And I'm not saying that that would probably replace it.
So, that's not going to replace it, that's just going to get some of the safety issues taken care of in each, not, not getting all new equipment.
No. That's not going to replace it all because you're, to replace what would need to be in Union Street, you're looking at a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That's to replace what's at Union Street, just one playground.
When was that? When was that put down there?
Uh, two thousand and, I'm wanting to say two thousand and four. We got just a little bit of grant. Carriker Craft helped me get a grant for that, and the playground slides, the big bear slides up there, they're starting, the plastic's starting to bust on them. They're starting to split. So, it's either going to have to be fixed or we're going to have to take it down for the safety issue.
Maybe it'd be a good time to evaluate which parts are getting used and which ones aren't, and which ones are getting used for the right reasons and the wrong reasons.
Out of the parts that we have, I'll go ahead and let you know right now, Commissioner, these five parts are hit hard. Your, your parts, even the new one that we got on Forest Avenue, and I'm not even considering it, these five parts that we have, Beechwood, Union Street, Fourth Street, Fourth Street's played a little less because there's, you know, the children age isn't there unless they're from the library or something, but they do play on it.
That's a collar. It's been a long time since that's been up.
And then the one on, the one right down here on Wall Street, they're, they're non-stop in the summertime. I would safe to be saying there was probably fifty at Union Street Friday.
I drove by there over the weekend, and there was a lot of people. Every time we go, there's other kids there.
This item here is entirely up to you, a new street sweeper. We're looking at about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's probably six, six months to eight months out if we would get one.
Well, I just want to say one thing about that. I've been saying this for pretty years now. If we're going to just clean the streets and find people and put boots on their cars, then we have to have a street sweeper that actually-
I agree with you. I, I had it in there last year. We took it out. I'll, I'll come back, right back to the table again, and I would like to see a new street sweeper. I'd like to see a better one than what we got.
Yes, because it doesn't work all that well, and it's kind of bad. I feel like finding people are not rotating when it doesn't really, it's ineffective.
I think last year, we asked you to see if you could find one a little cheaper or somewhat cheaper or contract it out, and we never heard anything back.
Contracting out is going to cost us about four to five thousand dollars a week. Now, we're going to get into the same thing that we first ran into when we got into the garbage. We're going to get into, the sweeper's going to come in and run, and they're going to run their schedule. Then if it isn't clean, then we're going to be right back to have to do it ourselves or try to do it ourselves, because they're not going to come back and, as the old saying is, rerun it.
Did we ever contract it?
In two thousand and sixteen, we contracted it.
Yeah, we, we did have one, but-
We had for a couple of years, we did it.
Was it that high?
No. It was only like sixteen-
But it was the same machine that we had.
Eighteen hundred a month. They just had a monthly rate at that point.
Isn't that, is she now doing a pretty good job?
Ours?
No, he doesn't put down water, does he?
Right. All it does is just light spray in front of it, it doesn't.
I had a guy, I had a guy just paint his porch, and I don't want to tie that up. He just painted the front of his porch, and the street sweeper came and he videotaped it, and all he did was blow the dirt up on his house. It's just, and it's, it's nobody's fault, it's just an old piece of the, right? Am I, am I telling the truth in that?
Yeah, we just, we just need to-
If we were to contract it out at that price, you're looking at thirty weeks, five thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, pay for itself in three years?
Yeah, yeah.
Less than three years.
I would think that you could surely contract it out less than that.
Maybe.
I mean, that seems, that seems ridiculous.
Two people, that's it. I've had two people that bite on it. That's it. One from Cincinnati, and they're not going to bring a sweeper in here and leave it. They're going to bring it in, take it, and take it back.
Look, I mean, it shouldn't take them a day to do it all. I mean, they could do it in a day to two days.
You can't. You got to run it every day because we got to move the vehicles from one side of the street to the other. We can't write tickets. It has to be done the five days a week to accommodate for our police department so that they have the vehicles all the way.
How much money have we brought in since we started enforcing the tickets, and you raised them from, and you raised them up?
I mean, there's, yeah, the line item, I, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it was pretty significant when I was looking at it the other day. It's in your, it'll be in your packet-
Okay.
-on, on Thursday, because I just ran the report and sent it to Lisa, but I didn't bring it with me. But, I mean, it, we have been bringing in a lot of money from, from tickets.
I don't get that.
It's way, it's over the budget line item. It is over the budget line item.
I haven't got it neither, I don't think.
I think it was, I think I had budgeted like ten thousand, and it was in the twenty range, is what, off the top of my head, because I just looked at it on Friday.
But people haven't learned to move their cars yet.
No.
We, we started mid-March putting on Facebook regarding street sweeper coming up in April. And we put something every week, and every week, it's no different than I spoke at the thing, the meeting the other day. Pick up the phone and call me. Don't call me a dufflehead on Facebook. If you want to talk to me, call me. And every week, I get slammed on Facebook because we're writing tickets. We're, we're not writing tickets yet, we won't start till May first, but it is foolish, the comments regarding the street sweeper on Facebook. We're just trying to put the word out there that, hey, it started, April first is when it started. You know, we're giving warnings on a daily basis, which we are. May first, we're going to start writing tickets, and it'll be, that'll be asked over for a while.
We'll have a discussion item Thursday on this. I don't want to continue that.
Yeah, that's good.
Uh, as, okay, as far as one of the items that we are going to be needing, it's, it's called an AC reclamer. We have the one for the twenty-two R, which is most of the common vehicles, but as far as the chief, both the chiefs, the police and the fire and the transit service, and some of the new vehicles that's coming in, they're going to the one-thirty-four, which is a propane. It's very high-flammable. Mark's vehicle, we looked at getting it fixed. If they would have had to drain it down and take it all the way back up, it was twenty-two hundred dollars to do it. But with the screaming and the hollering that my maintenance man done, and what we got through, I think it was around seven-fifty?
You talking about the back truck?
No, your, your vehicle, the one you drive. It's got the one-thirty-four in it.
You talking about refrigerator?
Yes, AC. But Mark's vehicle, we are starting to get new ones in. That's, that's hitting us pretty hard. We're not going to be able to afford to send them to have them backed down if they get a leak, or, you know, if the orifice goes bad on them or O-ring. That's an investment that we're going to need to make for the public works department to be able to accommodate all of our, our vehicle fleet that eventually is going to be moving into it. Right now, we have about eight vehicles. It would pay for itself in two vehicles just about by the time we get to it, if we had to take it all the way down, especially one of the ambulances. They take the one, they take the one-thirty-four now.
Keep going.
We're going to have to, we're going to change it out. Salt plow truck, that goes with the new plow truck I'm looking at, that's, that's about twenty thousand dollars to put a salt box on it and a new plow. So, that goes along with the cost of putting the truck in there. And then one of the other things we're looking at is my guys, it's brought to my attention. We've been out there since like two thousand and seven. We haven't had no flagpoles or anything. They want to put flagpoles to represent the public works department. We have our sign up, but we've never had a set of flagpoles. We would like to put flagpoles up out there, the three of them, to be able to, you know, support our thing. So, that's a little special item we're kind of looking for. Blacktop in the back, it's not on your list, but there was two extra items. Blacktop in the back of our lot, it goes as far back as where the chief has his little impound lot back there. Craig and David done the measurements on that for me, and it's about twenty thousand dollars to finish that up. That's never been done. It's just had the base on it. It's still got the two-inch lip that, where they stopped with the finish. So, and I had that in there last year, but we took it back out. And then it's time for us to get a new grasshopper mower. For our use at the public works department for our playgrounds, we haven't had a mower since two thousand and fourteen. So, we've-
How much?
It's around twenty thousand dollars.
Is that going to be electric?
No, it's a diesel.
Okay.
No, that's a diesel. It's a, it's a riding mower. It's a diesel hydraulic deck. You know, it's, it's a grasshopper. It's not one that's one of the cheap Walmart-made mowers. As far as that, that's all I've got. Anything you need to add?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Oh, Dennis, did you all sell a really nice aluminum dump bed at your, at your last sale? It was on a truck.
That wasn't ours.
Oh, it wasn't?
No, that wasn't ours. That was the utility commissions that had been pulled. They'd had that thing down there. It wasn't, no, it wasn't a nice one, so it was rotted out. They'd had that thing sitting down there on the ground. We just scooped it up, set it on a trailer, and sold it.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, it wasn't ours.
David?
You want me to go through them, or is it just they might want to ask me a question?
If you're going through, if you're going to go through them, but-
I'll go through them.
Be brief.
I'll go quick. Clark's Run Road Bridge, that's the first bridge you come to after you pass the highway garage, is you go on Clark's Run. It's an old stone pillar bridge. We've had problems with it. Guardrails falling away. I'm going to try, if we do this, probably put a metal deck possibly, but if I can't get it in the timely fashion, it'll go back to concrete. That's what we'll do. Hint and Drive subdivision drains, basically, all of that subdivision drains to one property owner in the back. And there's been multiple problems there for several years, and it's been pretty extensive over the past couple of years. And that's right where you're going to be replacing the, utility commission's going to be putting in a pump station in that area. Sewer, sewer pump station. So, it'd probably be a good time to fix all that when we're doing it. West Third Street roadway repair. I've tried to replace some of those retaining walls. There are still several in bad repair, but we've pretty much caught up with them. If you haven't been up there lately, we, I mean, most of it looks pretty decent now, but we do have a couple areas we need to work on. One-stop building, the fire panel, basically, the building's twenty years old plus. Fire panel's outdated, can't get parts for it. We've had a lot of trouble last year with some alarms and things like that. So, this is an updated price just to replace the whole thing. Monitor the building, basically, is what it is. Cox Building HVAC, lots of problems with that, you know, in the kitchen areas, down in the, you know, with the college cafe and the downstairs part. It's a split system, very difficult to work on. It's ten years old now, eleven, and there's, there's problems with it. There was problems with it from the beginning because every system, it's split separately. You couldn't run ductwork in that old building. Basically, it's one controls one. I mean, it's, it's very difficult, but this will help some of it. We're going to try to get it programmed correctly. Limestone Creek Pump Station, this probably won't happen, okay? This is the construction of the pipe to the river, okay? I've had a contract since June for the electrical that we did last year. We've had it ordered, switch gear. It still could be six months, eight months before I can get it. So, that's been a year, it'd be a year and a half problem before we end up, it'll probably, this, but we need to be aware that that's the final process of taking the pipe to the river. The pump is supposed to be here within a month. Now, I get a hole cut in the top of the building, we set the pump in, hopefully we can be ready to do some of the electrical work and have it ready in case we would need a spare pump. You know, long story short, but still, this other money, that's what it's going to take at this time, but I don't know that it'll happen.
Is that the street lights, what we have?
It's a whole new pipe and chamber going to the river from the pump, from the new pump under the flood wall to the river.
And that's this big, is that the big pump station on Second Street, or is-
Breaker, big tower edge.
Okay. I guess I didn't realize we were thinking about that.
Yeah.
So, my question was, is that seven-hundred-and-fifty in addition to what we had budgeted last year?
Yes, yes. Yep, it is. Handicap sidewalk repairs, that kind of speaks for itself. One-stop building flooring, I've been trying to replace some of the old VCT tile that's been there since it was new. Some of them are cracked, coming up, and hard to clean, so we've been trying to replace some of that. Public Works, we replaced, Public Works too, we replaced the, the front garage doors, and this is to replace the back ones, is what this is for. Now, the reason is the concern on those is those doors, beautiful, but they're all glass, and they're very, they can be real dangerous, okay? But, you know, with the doors up, somebody happened to hit them, knock it all the way up, somebody, I mean, they're a thing that nobody has no more, and they're, they're, they're a real safety hazard. And these are energy-efficient doors. We put them in, like, it makes the building look really good, but that's something that we can say yes or no on too. It's not a total necessity. Asphalt patching and repair, that's just my patching contract, city streets and things. We just got the funding last week. It was a hundred and ninety-five thousand, I think we're going to get this year.
From Municipal Road Aid.
From Municipal Road Aid. So, may not have to have this, but we may get most of it done. You know, my road contract for last year still won't be finished till June, the end of June this year, and then this will be the new one for next year. We've been fortunate with Columbia Gas being here. We've been able to take care of a lot of this, haven't had to use a lot- We've been able to take care of a lot of this, haven't had to use a lot of this budget, so. Washington Glen, uh, culvert replacement, it's a, it's a sixty-inch culvert, not seventy-two-inch culvert, double culvert, and it's under both roads, it's one of the major ones going in where you go in and go down. Well, we've tried to patch it the past several years, but it's going to have, we've got, it's all rusted out. And it's a hundred and forty feet long, I mean, it's a, it's a long one, so that's something, we'll probably do that with our crews too. Clark Street, that's the storage and shelter, that's the lot we bought on Clark Street from Columbia Gas.
KU.
KU.
Or KU, yeah, KU, that's right. And, uh, basically we've talked about putting a, a building there for the street sweeper. Now, if we get the big street sweeper, I might have to make a bigger building, but that's what, you know, to keep it downtown and keep it inside and to have a small shelter there. But that's something me and Matt talked about, I thought I'd just go on and throw that out there. That's it. I mean, on the back there, you see Boys and Girls Club Trail, we got that grant, that's going to be happening. You know, as soon as we get the formal go-ahead, I think our participation, it was fifty-fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, uh, the flat grant, still waiting on the formal word on it, but that's supposed to happen. And we can start the engineering on that, that'll be, I'm sure, I don't know that, uh, you know, when I'm going to be able to use that part of it, you know, as soon as we get the word on it. And then the tap grant, we got some pretty good word on that a couple of weeks ago for connecting west end of town, east end of town to the river park and back sidewalks. So signage, so that could be too.
It'd be great if you could start the eight-hundred block.
The gated community.
Go both ways at the same time.
But they, they wanted to know if we would, you know, they're, they're thinking the budget may be not enough and she said, "We don't want you to be able to stop, you know, we don't want you to get upset if you can't do the whole thing." I said, "We'll do whatever we can." So they're not worried about us finishing, we don't have to finish it. Then we can take another project and go from there, so, so it may stop it, somebody's-
Seven hundred bucks?
But-
Stop. George, real quick.
Yeah, real quick.
So I can get to Mark.
Uh, good afternoon, um, just a few things, uh, for the public works departments, we both would like to keep the demolition budget the same, uh, forty thousand dollars. That's the same as it's been, I think, for at least the last two years. We'd like, uh, two thousand dollars for office equipment slash furniture. Last year, we put in a thousand for that, uh, and Jim and I just haven't had the opportunity to really take advantage of that. So this would be a ballpark for improvements down there, uh, carpet painting and so a little bit of furniture. I've been using, as of next month, I have been using the same PC for seven years, so I've, I've requested a thousand dollars for a new PC. I'm not sure, not sure if it would actually cost that much, but I don't know how much PCs cost. Jim would like an I-Plan table, he has this, uh, this, this really nice vision of getting, becoming a level-three building inspector. And what that would mean is we would have expanded jurisdiction and a lot of stuff that goes to the state, he would be able to do plan review locally and it would actually, if, if this happens, uh, that would be a lot of revenue for us. And, um, this I-Plan table, he's, he's shown me pictures of it, it basically looks like a giant tablet and it will enable him to digitally review plans. Um, he ballparked that and it, they don't, I think they're fairly expensive, so they don't even put the prices of them on the website, so I think he ballparked a decent one at three thousand dollars, but I'll have to check on that. Uh, in terms of the planning commission, uh, we're adding a housing study, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, to the, uh, the update for the comprehensive plan, the city's half would be five thousand dollars because it was costing an additional twenty-five, or ten thousand, uh, in addition to the, to the, uh, comprehensive plan update for higher statistics for that. And, uh, we've had, we, we've had one special meeting and we'll probably have another one this month, special planning commission meetings, per their bylaws, they get fifty dollars per special meeting, so if all eight of them show up, that's four hundred dollars. So I don't want to be, uh, under budget for that, so I'd like to allocate two thousand seventy-five special meetings. We, we might not use that, uh, starting in July, but I'd like that to be there in case we actually haven't used it because since this is a new process, we've never really gone through before, you know, we might need that money for, for some things.
I have a question, George.
Sure.
I've got last year's budget I brought. Well, you, we budgeted a thousand dollars for furniture. And I think, and I'll do respect, that we said if you didn't use it in that budget year, to not ask for it again.
Okay, I don't, I don't recall that.
Well, you still got till June thirtieth.
Right.
You still got till June thirtieth.
That's what I was going to say, come see me, you need to use that before-
You need to use that.
In these next few months.
That's, yeah, you need to use that thousand dollars in that one because you already got a budget.
Okay.
Mark?
Can we do that?
Unless you had any other questions, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm ready to-
Alright.
Roll through it.
Trying to be brief here, good afternoon. Uh, I'd just like to start out by thanking everybody for the time, trying to make the best of use of it. One thing I'd like to start out by saying is there's a lot of supply chain delays in this. It's not an excuse that's being plucked out of thin air to, to feed anybody in line of bull. We could identify a problem right now and go after it aggressively and it might be the fiscal year after this next one, before we get something. Case in point would be Limestone Flood Pump Station. I'm just saying that because that has a lot to do with some of, uh, you know, the things that are in this current fiscal year budget that we're in right now. Uh, the only one that I anticipate that's going to cause us an issue and we need to include it in next year is the, uh, the big one. If you're looking at the same list of thirteen hide as I am, it's the Water Plant Drywell Improvement Project. That's to redo the, uh, the raw pumps that pull water from the river, new submersible pumps. Redo the stairwell in that. So costs are up, we're all aware of that and the, the delay of getting things in because now that the design is done, now there's going to have to be, you know, Division of Water approval. So that's a process where they get to review our plans and from the engineer and get back to us, so that's item one. Plate settlers for the super pulsators, these are plate settlers and the clarifiers and they are essential to the operation of the water treatment plant. It's, it's not an option, they were included in a fiscal year twenty, I think. The money got diverted to do upgrade filter controls, which was needed as well, but, um, chemical costs are up and we're spending a lot more in chemical to treat our water. So, uh, that, that's not, uh, an option in my opinion. Number three, uh, there's three filters at the water treatment plant. We, uh, redid Filter One this year, however, there's an obstruction, trying to make this quick and easy. There's an obstruction on Filter One effluents, so in the meantime, while we're waiting on getting that repaired, we overload two of three. And so we're trying to include money in this next capital budget, we're requesting it, uh, to get those assessed, make sure that they're going to be effectively filtered, filtering drinking water. And just please stop me if you have any questions, I'm just trying to get through the list. Number four, all surface material or all materials locator. So most of our lines in the southern part of the system are PVC and you can't really find those with any other piece of equipment. So, uh, distribution crew thinks that it would be helpful to be able to locate those plastic non-metallic lines. Gate valve exerciser, right now, the utility department does not have any type of gate, or excuse me, valve exercising program. It would behoove us to start implementing one because those valves, they sit in the ground for decades on end. If they don't get turned regularly, it, it's harder on our employees, sometimes they break. Most of the time, the immediate impact is instead of you have a leak or a service line or a main break in one area, you've got to go two to three valves back and you put more people out on a boil water advisor. So that's why, you know, those I, ideas, those, that's why I'm needing it. Item six, rehabilitation of our jetter vac truck, our jetter vac truck is about fifteen years old. We use it almost every day. The chassis is in really good shape, but the fans, the vac units and stuff like that, uh, it, it really needs attention. That, that price for seventy-seven-two fifty basically takes our truck and re-habs the entire thing. Like it was just like if we traded in, got a new one. Be the same truck, but new jetter, you know, vac units, new fans, uh, we'd be able to have some limited hydroexcavation, uh, abilities we could do with it, uh, I think it'd be a good idea. And that price has a one-month rental limit.
Included in it.
The work's expected to take one to three months. Number seven, new dump truck bed at the sewer plant. So we've got a dump truck at the sewer plant that hauls sewage sludge. It's rusted through, we've had it out to public works to put a plane in it to, uh, try to, to keep it in service and it's just time to buy a new dump truck bed. Not, not a truck, just the dump bed. And I think we were able to get a pretty good price there, eleven-four seventy-five. Item eight, new camera for C-Mom activities inspecting sewer lines. So basically, we've got a camera truck down there at the sewer plant that has fifteen, sixteen-year-old audio or video equipment in it that does not let us record and the cable on it is only two hundred feet long because as they've used it over the years, it's gotten caught, they've had to cut some of it off. That item, I'll just say, if, I know that's a big price tag, there are options that we could discuss later on, like maybe we just get more cable on our truck or we replace the video equipment in our truck to where we have the capability of record. But the reason why it's on this list is because we are under consent judgment to camera inspect and clean twenty percent of our sewer collection system every year. So that means every five years, we're supposed to do the whole thing.
And can I-
Sure.
I mean, what good is it to camera it when you can't record it? And what proof do you have?
We want, we want a camera because we want to see where there's, where there's collapsed lines, collapsed clay tile, uh, obstruction, so we know where to get a jetter truck or if our jetter truck doesn't have the capability, we get some contractor in here to keep those lines clear. New generators for Beasley Creek. When we have power outages, and I know they don't happen all the time, but we need to be prepared. When you don't have power at a sewer pump station, basically the wet well fills up and then you've got sewage on the ground. All we're looking for was number one is there's two pump stations that take almost all the sewage, sanitary sewer flow from, from our whole system and get into the plant. That's Lawrence Creek and that has everything on the hill on it, over half million gallons a day. And you've got Beasley, which is taking everything from Maine to Rotary to Wa, uh, Wall Street and then Beasley. There's an old generator in Beasley, but it does not work. I don't know, when it stopped working, if it ever did work, I just know that the Division of Water Field Inspector has come by and all he could say is, "Hey, turn that on," because in the, in the event of a power outage, we're supposed to at least be able to keep those sanitary sewer overflows from happening. So, so instead of actually turning it on and starting it up, we've been, "Oh, well, come over here and look at this." It's something we need to do and I just think that it's a good time to, to have it looked at to see if, so that's something that we can, we can make happen. Lawrence Creek needs it too, but I understand we can't take care of everything in one year.
They have to be wired in there.
And, and that, and I'm also going to kind of allude to that in item eleven, but let me, let me do item ten first real quick. There's sedimentation basins, there's sludge basins now on the east end of the power plant. If you're looking at a top view of the water plant, they're about a hundred and thirty foot long, twenty foot wide, about fifteen, twenty foot deep, they're twelve foot full of sludge. That sludge is coming out of the treatment plant as it's cleaning the river water up. It's the filter backwash water, it's the sludge from the clarifiers. Typically, in a normal operation, what you do is you have that cleaned out every once in a while, either with your equipment or our personnel, or we contract that out. I don't know why it hasn't been done, but because it hasn't been done on a regular basis, now it's getting to the point where we're running out of storage. You cannot just put that back to the river, that is illegal and it's a violation, we don't want to do that. So we need to, uh, to seriously look at getting a contractor in here and getting that sludge taken out. The price I gave you is like two vac trucks, five guys and two weeks of five G N R days. So anything over that would exceed that. And we've got options that we can explore later, like maybe we could have them haul it to the drying beds at the sewer plant if the sewer plant drying beds actually had sand put in them like they used to where it would actually dry it out. And then you get all the water off and you're not paying to haul that water, because that's where most of your weight is going to go. Item eleven, so I understand somewhere, as far as I know, it's just a verbal thing, there may be some written documentation somewhere. The city and/or the utility department had an agreement with London with E D S for, in the case of a power outage, they would be able to provide their power generation trailers. So in the event of a power outage, let's say KU comes and says, "Hey, we've had a big tornado, we've got something, the earthquake, something bad catastrophic happened." If we don't have electricity, we're not going to be able to treat any water. We're not going to be able to pump any water, which in turn means once the reservoir and the tanks go dry, we will not have water. So what I'm proposing is, I know that that doesn't happen every day, but we can't predict the future. What I'm proposing is switch gears, be installed at least the water treatment plant and the water booster pump station so that in the event of an, an extended power outage, we would be able to hook up multiple generators and at least be able to treat water and pump it. I'm not saying do the whole system with generators because that would be billions of dollars, but at least be ready. Maze Link Tank Rehab, that number is based off one quote that I got for, I think, I think I had the interior and exterior quoted by one company at like a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but that was several months ago before we had explored the fact that now that tank really needs to be, uh, permanently repaired from the leak that happened a few months ago and also interior and exterior, uh, rehab. So that's everything, permanently fixing the leak, sandblasting the interior and the exterior of the tank, you know, taking it completely out of service, putting everything it needs back in it and completely doing quality recode on it so we can get many more years of life out of that drinking water tank. Um, the reason why we have not advertised that for bid is because until that booster pump station gets installed at Helena Road, uh, where the bypass hybrids are put in, if we were to advertise that, you know, we can't just tell a contractor, "Hey, ninety days from now, you can start," because if the booster station isn't in, you, you're going to have half the county out of water. We have to get the new booster station put in and then we'll be able to put a bypass pump at that location. We'll be able to still provide pressure and volume to all the residents in Southern Mason County. Uh, the last item that I've got is skate upgrades. What we've got right now is a, an incomplete look at our system. So the, the, the operators at the water treatment plant, what they see on a monitor, they can see the tank levels and the reservoir and four of the five drinking water tanks. If they want to see what's going on Maze Link, they've got to go to a completely different telemetry. And that telemetry is problematic in terms of reliability. So what I'm proposing is we do a study to assess how old the system is, what the information that we're getting compared to what really we need to have, uh, the big picture of what's going on with the system. Because right now, we're still having someone manually check sewer lift stations. It would be nice if the person that was on duty both day and night at the water treatment plant, he could see what's going on with the entire system. Uh, right now, that's not really what we have, I understand this is a big item. So, uh, I'd welcome, uh, talking with y'all about it in detail at a later time.
Alright, I know we have some of you that got a get. We will continue these discussions in more detail. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of what, and you have this in your pockets, so you can start looking at it a little more. Thursday, we will schedule another meeting, more detailed meeting, maybe hit on one or two departments and we'll keep, we'll keep those rolling.
I would like to have, for each department, a complete printout of which cards you have in your department.
You all still have those, uh, do you all still have those budget, or not budget?
You gave me a word.
Yeah, insurance, you all still have those, if not, I have them, okay.
Well, I have that because it's a stock on form right here together.
Yeah.
I like if you've got it in your computers, print them out.
What, what do you want on there, just to make my own year or what?
Ben number, yeah, what do you have?
I can get you whatever you need.
Well, that's it.
Okay.
You probably could just take the insurance form.
How many parts you got in your department?
You can take the insurance forms that I gave you and you can circle what, what you currently have.
I can do that.
Every, all of you.
Yeah.
So Matt, you want to meet on budget again on Thursday?
No, no, we'll talk, no, Thursday, we'll talk, setting another date, another budget meeting date, we'll do that on Thursday. Yeah, we'll hit them all, we'll hit them all too.
Commissioner Brammer. Commissioner Cartwell. Commissioner Wood. Commissioner McKay. Mayor Cottrell.
Thank you all.